Meeting called to order. This is the October 28th, 2020. Being held at the council chambers. Would the clerk please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the open public meetings law, duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal building. The meeting will adjourn at 10:00 PM unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Councilor Pigottelli? Councilor Pigottelli, lead us into the pledge.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Clerk, please read the roll, please. Call the roll.
Council President Slusinski?
Here.
Councilman McCann?
Here.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Here.
Councilwoman Rose?
Here.
Councilman Saliani?
Here.
Councilman Talamini?
Here.
And Mayor Kamala.
Present. All right, on to the mayor's report. A couple important items. First of all, there was a rabies incident that took place in Oakland on Roosevelt Boulevard last week. Had to do with a resident and a kitten. The kitten did test positive for rabies. Letters were sent to the community, and we just want to urge everybody, please do not feed or touch the wildlife. The following letter went out, says, "So attention, residents has come to the attention of the Oakland Board of Health that a young stray cat in the area attacked by wildlife tested positive for rabies." Rabies is an infectious disease caused by the rabies virus. Animals infected with rabies display strange behavior such as aggression and signs of neurologic impairment, including vocalization, circling, and paralysis. If you cannot tell if the animal has rabies just by looking at it, always maintain a respectful distance from wildlife. Please do not feed or provide harborage for feral cats or other wildlife. People who have bitten by, have been contact, have come in contact with saliva from a stray cat and other wildlife or injured or sick animals should notify the local health department and seek medical care immediately. So I just remind everybody, please, if you're, any animals down in Roosevelt area, please be careful. Do not handle the wildlife, cats, or anything else like that. And our health department is on it, as well as the, we're working with our animal control people as well. All right, the second piece of business I have is the Yoppo Avenue project. As you know, going up and down Yoppo, they should be finishing the rest of the concrete work, which are the sidewalks and curbing. And paving is going to begin in November. So November 3rd, 2025, the milling of Yoppo Avenue, residents will have access to their driveways. November 6th, paving of Yoppo Avenue from McCoy Road to Page Drive. That's the top part by the entrance to the high school. And November 7th, 2025, paving of Yoppo Avenue from Page Drive through Ramapo Valley Road. The Borough of Oakland Police Department indicated parking will be permitted on East Oak Street and Page Drive. So the notifications have gone out to all the residents in the area, as far as where we are with that. I want to remind everybody, the election day is Tuesday, November 4th, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Polls are open. Also, Veterans Day will be, will be on November 11th. We ask people to gather at 10:45. The bells will be tolling at 11 o'clock, followed by a ceremony. And I just want to mention, the trunk or treat was a huge success. I'm sure our liaison to public events will be more information on it, but it was very well attended. Guys, the Oakland Public Events Committee and our volunteers did a wonderful job on that. So I want to thank everybody. All right, at this point, do I have a motion to open a public?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public issue address the governing body? Yes. Sure. Just need your name and address.
I'm Blake Carlson, I live at 6 Geronimo Way. I have two issues. One is, why do we have no parking from 2:00 to 6:00 AM?
Like Geronimo?
Anywhere in the city.
Oh, Mr. Carlson?
Why?
Very questionable. Is that on the, you know, in the traffic codes?
Well, up until recently, only one entrance into Oakland had a sign. Title 39, I forget the exact paragraph, is very clear. Parking regulations have to be clearly identified. Right now, you put signs up, after, I've got two tickets, and so I'm fighting it, and they haven't given me a court date yet, because I requested a trial with the officer and attendants. What I've been able to tell so far, the majority of the tickets are given to Oakland residents. I can't park on my street? Geronimo's a big, wide street. You can have fire trucks drive up and down that road when there's fire trucks coming and cars are parked. Yet there are other roads, from what I've been able to tell, where cars are parked all the time, but never receive a ticket. But on that street, an Oakland cop lives. Or a sheriff's officer lives.
Which street is that?
Manitofer One, that's a sheriff's officer. I won't talk about the Oakland cop. I walk my dogs a lot at 2:00 AM, because I work till 3:00. I have clients who know Australia. So I'm a late night person, right? So 3:00 is there, early morning, so for me to be up is no big deal, because that's where my client is. So I often walk my dogs. I've also had the cops call on me, because I have orange flashers on, it's just so I don't get hit by cars. And I see cars parked all the time on the street. And I don't understand the purpose. All I can tell so far is it's a way for one neighbor to get against another neighbor, but there's no justification for it. And up until the recent signs, the tickets the cops gave were all illegal in violation of Title 39. I had the exact thing, but I forgot my book at home. But anybody who looks at Title 39 will clearly see, parking rules are to be displayed. The new signs are this big, this big. They're tiny. Unless you stop your car, get out, and look at it, you can't see it. So if I appeal this to the court, and I will if I lose, I will have, A, I've got pictures of all the sites where there's no signs. So therefore, the tickets get thrown out. If they get thrown out, I will file a class action lawsuit against the Borough of Oakland, demanding that you refund all tickets for parking between 2:00 and 6:00 AM for the last five years be refunded. So again, what's the purpose of the thing, except to take it, residents of Oakland, to get money for the cops? I opened it up to you guys. Why do you have the rule?
What was your second question?
My second question is what kind of administration you're running. And the reason I say that is, I went down camping in Ocracoke. I come back and I-
I'm sorry, can you, I couldn't hear. Where?
Ocracoke, North Carolina.
Okay.
It's only because I was gone. I come back, and I get certified letters from your health person here in Oakland through the county, saying that I have water pooling on my pool cover, and insects are growing there. I'm like, first off, it's a mesh pool cover. The only reason the water got that high was because we had a lot of rain. I have nothing there. So my second question then was, how did they find that? Did they go into my backyard illegally? Because there was no warrant tacked to my house, or my fence, or anything. And my brother was there, and nobody from the health department even knocked on their door. So I did some more digging, and I found that you've got a guy named Vinny in construction.
Got a what?
A guy named Vinny, who works your construction department. He sent somebody out, and he took pictures of my backyard, and then went on to lecture me that I keep a messy backyard. What the hell are you looking at my backyard for? It's behind a fence. You can't see it. And the only way, I have two dogs, so I don't like people going in my backyard, because I have two huskies. And anybody who knows something about a husky knows, they run. They will run. And if you look at lost dogs, huskies are always high, because they take off. So I don't like anybody in my backyard. And then, when I spoke to Vinny, it turned out he had gone into my neighbor's backyard, who was also in Florida on vacation, looked over the fence, and taken pictures of my backyard over the fence. And when I talked to him on the phone, he's describing, oh, you have a quad here, you got this there. I do a lot of projects outside. I brought, my yard changes every day. I build cabinets, I build furniture, I do all kinds of stuff. I'm rebuilding my camper. If you look at my backyard this week and next week, it'll be completely different. But again, what right does he have to go into my neighbor's backyard, Hank was incensed, to take pictures of my yard, and then to proceed to lecture me? I wouldn't keep my backyard like that. Who is this Vinny guy? And then he got a letter from the town saying, well, you can't store refrigerators on your driveway. I have never stored a refrigerator on my driveway, unless it was going to the trash.
Yeah, can you clarify what that meant by storage?
He said that I had a refrigerator outside on my driveway.
Was it plugged in, to her like?
No. What it was, was, I go camping.
Yeah.
I had just purchased a domestic refrigerator for my camper. The box was in my driveway, because it arrived, and the garbage day was, the thing was, I was waiting for it. This is a box that's like this big, this big. It's a big box. I would get it dragged into the garage, I'd just put it behind my truck, nobody could see it. But I got a letter from the town, saying I can't store that.
You can't store the box?
Right. He said I can't store a refrigerator. Now-
No, I get it. No, but yeah.
I'm like, are you kidding me? Amazon just delivered, it was so big, I mean, I wasn't going to carry it. You know, I took the fridge out, put it in my camper, but the box was going to go on Wednesday. To recycling. And then I got a letter, because I had a propane tank, a couple propane, propane tanks in front of my fence. They were empty. I use about 20-plus propane tanks a month. I brew beer, I do a lot, I don't drink the beer, I'm just getting formulas ready, but there's a lot of heat involved. So I go through a lot of propane. I have a contract with a company called Jack Gas. Jack Gas gives me a really good price. So currently, a propane tank is $16 for 20 pounds, from them, delivered. I pay 10. I pay 10 because I'm a big consumer of natural gas. But the deal is with Jack Gas, I don't know what day they're going to come. So when I'm ready, I put them out in front of my fence, and Jack Gas will come within the week. So if you ever need great propane delivery, half the price of Home Depot and stuff, you call Jack Gas. And they deliver for $10, one tank or 50 tanks. They're great. But that's my deal with them, because I'm a big user of propane. Not doing anything nefarious with it. I brew beer with it, just try to get it right, and once it's, I get rid of the beer. I don't really drink it, I'm not much of a drinker. So it's more just to get the formulas in place. So I consume a lot of gas. And then Vinny said, oh, you can't have that in front. As far as I know, there's no town ordinance that says I can't. Then he said, well, you have trash and stuff. No, my, my front yard is a little mess. My driveway is a little messy. But it changes every day, because I'm doing something. Right now, there's a lot of grape containers, those white containers that grapes get picked in and shipped, because I'm making wine. A week from now, those will be gone.
Do you do this in the yard or in the basement?
In the yard, backyard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, in my house, I want to slab. On Geronimo, the mountain is about two feet below, so I couldn't build a basement if I tried.
Okay.
So that's why we have sewers. So, I want to know who the heck this Vinny is, and who's he to tell me how to keep my yard? Because there's a lot of houses that have a bigger mess. Mine is constantly changing, just because I have, I was doing a lot of construct, building process. So I put a little tent, built it so I was in and out of the rain. So it changes all the time. It's not like it's permanent.
So here's what we can do. Mr. Coons, can we, can we look into this issue first thing tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, no, this Vinny dude is that he can tell me how to keep my backyard.
He's a property maintenance officer.
What's that?
He's a property maintenance officer.
All right.
Would you be amenable to coming in, after we speak, after we investigate this, to come in and sit down?
Sure.
Okay.
I tried to talk to him, but he says, I can't tell you, I can't share anything with you.
Okay.
He says, I have photos.
Okay.
Why are you taking pictures? And who gave you permission? And I'm, I've talked to a lawyer, and we're just about ready to file a lawsuit, because he doesn't have the right to go in my backyard, as far as I know.
You know, many times, it's a neighbor that does the complaining.
Well-
We don't, normally, we don't go out looking for violations. It's when someone calls a complaint.
That could very well be the case.
Well, that's probably the case.
But the thing is, Vinny didn't even know what was going on.
Hey, guys, Councilman Pigottelli, can we just, we're going to investigate this, and let's, we'll have a conversation with Mr. Coons tomorrow, and we'll determine what's going on and get back to you. Is that fair?
Yeah, but just so you know, I am filing suit against the county of Bergen, and you're being drawn into that based on the health department certified letter I got, that I had insects growing on my pool cover. Because I have a mesh pool cover. Anybody who knows anything about pool covers, if you have one of those elephant covers, well, it goes right through. It's about safety for kids. I haven't opened my pool in years. Don't use it. I let the frogs come every year, and every year I have two batches of frogs. And when they hatch and leave the pool, I have 10,000 frogs everywhere, and they disappear. I got a lecture on how I should keep my pool. That water's so clean, you can drink it. It's perfectly clean. But for them to send a picture based on Vinny's picture, without doing anything, and then to lecture me about my pool is ridiculous. Because you don't even know, I tried to explain, I have an elephant cover. An elephant cover is porous. It's designed to let the water go through. It's so that a little kid can walk across the pool cover and not drown. It's a safety thing. It's all it is. It wants the water to go through.
Okay, so we'll look at this, and we will get back to you.
And I want to know about this 2:00 to 6:00 stuff. What's the purpose of it? Do you guys know? I spoke to the captain of the police department, and even he acknowledged, most of the signs were not. That's from the police, and if anybody should know Title 39, it's the police. And if you're issuing summons to residents of Oakland, and you don't have a sign up, you're in clear violation of the law. And the sign you did put up is like this tall. It should be big. So you can see it when you're driving into town. I have other issues, but I'll save those for another time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Good evening, William Sisti, 12 Eagle Crest Place in Oakland.
Did you come from the back there?
Yeah. I'm here as a citizen, not as a TV guy tonight. It's in very good hands back there. I recently attended a county meeting about the proposed radio tower, transmission tower, on the border of Oakland and Marwah in the mountains. And I get the difference between an environmentalist and a developer. An environmentalist has a cabin in the woods, and developer wants to build a cabin in the woods. But they want to build this tower up there, on the border, on one of the high peaks. Couple people from Oakland came, and 10 or 15 other people came and spoke about their opposition to it. Now, it's not a done deal. As I understand it, this company presented a request to put it up there. So they're, they're discussing whether to accept the request to talk about it. It's, I guess, a lengthy process. The only benefit that, that the tower, suppose will have to the county, is supposedly better cell service in the Mariposa Mountains. Now, the county commissioners, rightly so, they were, they were for against it, they just were taking public comment. I asked them, well, why couldn't they go up to Hareman State Park? There's plenty of big mountains up there on top of 287 or Tuxedo, not in the Highlands, which is already under these restrictions. I mean, from my understanding, it's hard to build a, extend your garage in the Highlands without, you know, having a problem. So a lot of people spoke. I would urge the council, if they want to discuss it and talk about it, to look into it, and either voice a pro or con, once it gets to that point. I would hope they would vote against it. Particularly since the only benefit to the county would be cell service. I kind of jokingly, the tower's going to be for communications, to transfer stock trades, instead of 10 milliseconds to Canada in 5 milliseconds. So it gets up there faster, they can do the trades faster. If the only benefit to the county is going to be cell service in, in the mountains there, I kind of jokingly said, listen, I would at least get a couple pennies on each trade that's going through. And maybe because the tower's going to be in Oakland, and if it does go through, maybe we could get some benefit. It's a private company that presented this, and then they put these up in different spots.
Is this in Marwah or Oakland?
They said it's right on the border.
But what is, I don't know-
I'm sorry.
Is it, but-
I'm sorry. In the Highland, you know where Bear Swamp Road is?
Yeah, yeah.
If you kind of go up that way, that's where kind of the Oakland and Marwah kind of come together, on top of some hill, on top of some trail and things. Now, listen, there's already a tower on top of Skyline, and there's already a tower up on Stag Hill on the top there. You know, just put another one next to there, you know. You got one, you might as well put two. If it gets closer, and they think they want to do it, and there is some benefit involved, and if it does happen, maybe we could get some benefit from that, too. Half a cent a trade or something, as it goes. Okay? And if they, it's, we, the TV committee in Oakland gets the copies of the Bergen County meetings, and if anyone wants to, is listening on the world wide web, tonight at 10 o'clock, we broadcast the Bergen County council meetings live. Well, not live, but recorded, so you can actually see what's going on. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I comment on that for a second?
Really not a back and forth.
Okay, no. It's more, it's, I don't know if you do a lot of hiking.
No.
If you're back there, there's no cell service, which means if you get hurt, you get nothing, no way.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, guys. This is a county issue, it's not an Oakland issue. Anybody else? Not saying you have a motion to close.
Motion to close?
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're up to approval of minutes, October 14th, 2025. Motion approved?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or changes? Not seeing any? Roll call.
Council President Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Epstein, I was on a first aid call.
Yep. Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Epstein.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, we have October 14th, 2025 executive minutes. Motion approved.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Does any discussion, has to be held in executive session. Do we have any discussion? Not seeing any? Roll call.
Council President Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Epstein.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilwoman Saliani?
Epstein.
And Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving up to special announcements. I have a very, I have a proclamation that I want to read into the record. We have a resident in Oakland who turned 102 years old. And her name is Margaret Sarah. Now, the interesting part about this is Mrs. Sarah is the, her daughter was married to the owner of the Dairy Queen on 202 back in the 60s and 70s. So let me read this into the record. She's a very lovely lady. She's a little hard of hearing, vision isn't too good, but she's all there, she's sharp as a whip, and absolutely is a funny lady. So, this is for honoring Margaret Sarah. Whereas Margaret Sarah is a warm-hearted woman from New Jersey, whose life has been defined by her love for family, faith, community. And whereas Margaret will be celebrating her 102nd birthday, a truly extraordinary milestone that stands as a testament to a life fulfilled with love, strength, and grace. And whereas Margaret is a proud mother of five children, grandmother to 13, and a great-grandmother to grandmother to many more. She has dedicated her life to nurturing her family, serving as a devoted homemaker and the heart of her household. And whereas a devout Catholic, Margaret's deep faith has guided her throughout her life, bringing her joy and strength through regular worship and spiritual practice. And whereas Margaret is a woman of many interests, an avid reader, who enjoys books, magazines, and keeping up with current events, a lover of Hallmark movies, game shows, and music, and a creative spirit who finds fulfillment in the arts, crafts, cooking, and baking. And whereas despite challenges with hearing and vision, Margaret continues to live life to the fullest, engaging in social gatherings, outdoor activities, and group events that keep her active, connected, and inspired. And whereas her favorite color is blue, her sweet tooth and love for hot cup of coffee are well-known. She delights in board games, puzzles, and audiobooks that keep her mind sharp and her heart happy. And whereas Margaret's warmth, kindness, and enduring optimism make her a beloved member of her community, always ready with a smile, a story, and a generous spirit that brightens the lives of all that know her. Now therefore be resolved that I, Eric Kamala, Mayor of the Borough of Oakland, on behalf of the governing body and the residents of our community, do hereby honor and recognize Margaret Sarah on a joyous occasion of her 102nd birthday, celebrating her lifelong devotion to family, faith, and community, and extend our heartfelt appreciation for her joy, grace, and example she brings to us all. Presented on October 2025, Eric Kamala, Mayor. I'd like to give Margaret a big round of applause and a happy birthday. Happy birthday, Mayor. All right, we're up to the following. We have authorized raffle license RL 1570 for PTO VMS on December 6, 2025, for a 50/50 to support VMS teachers and PTO at 71 Oak Street. Authorized raffle license RL 1571 for the Sports Association of Oakland on multiple dates for the calendar raffle in support of the 12U baseball team going to Cooperstown, and it'll be held at 71 Page Drive. Authorized raffle license RL 1572 for the Knights of Columbus, Chapter 5846, Ramapo Valley Council, on 11/21/25 for a 50/50, and supports the Bart's Food Distribution Center and Ponchar's Pantry at 7 Courthouse Place. Authorized raffle license RL 1573 for the Sports Association of Oakland on 12/5/2025 for a tricky train, support of Oakland Braves Wrestling at 7 Courthouse Place, Oakland, New Jersey. Authorized raffle license RL 1574 for the Sports Association of Oakland on 12/5 for a 50/50 in support of Oakland Braves Wrestling at 7 Courthouse Place, Oakland. And we have authorized raffle license RL 1575 for the Oakland Sports Associations on January 18th, 26th, for a 50/50 in support of Oakland Braves Wrestling at 7 Courthouse Place. We'll do this as a consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull any out before we do as a consent? Not seeing any? No? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second by Councilman Pignotelli. Roll call.
Council President Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
And Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we're up to resolutions, and we have four resolutions today. We have 25-291, authorized refund of utility fees. 25-292, resolution authorizing signatory for DPW petty cash. 25-293, dedication by rider, uniform construction fines and penalties. And 25-295, authorize hire DPW clerk one. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Anybody wish to pull any out? No? Okay, roll call.
Council President Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
We have no ordinance, we have no work session. Does anybody on the council have any new business? Not seeing any? Does anybody have any old business? Not seeing any? We have our committee liaison reports. Councilman Talamini, would you like to start?
Sure. So with recreation, the rec, roller hockey signups are going on right now. They close November 2nd. Please make sure if you're going to sign up, you sign up before, otherwise there is a late fee. And then also, I'm just being asked to remind people that there are no pets allowed on any of the Borough-owned fields, so please don't bring your pets down to the fields. They're not allowed down there. You could use the, buy a pass for the dog park, use the dog park, but keep your pets off of the Borough rec facilities. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes, my apologies, I was unable to attend the senior citizen meeting. I had a first aid call. And last night, I was unable to attend the Board of Health meeting because I had a mandatory training for bloodborne pathogens at the fire department, so I do not have any report. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselman. My apologies for my traveling, but I do want to thank the Public Events Committee. They ran the trunk or treat this weekend, and as always, it was done first class. The team did a great job. Several hundred beings, there's definitely a couple hundred people were there to help. And once again, I think that group did a great job. And Mayor, thank you for attending and walking around and the feedback that the kids like to get in camp. Just so you know.
Thank you.
That's the only report I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCann?
No report, Mayor.
Councilman Slusinski?
Thank you, Mayor. From the library, the big event coming up is Truck Day on Saturday, November 8th, from 12 to 2:00. Everyone with children should stop by and enjoy this amazing event, made possible by the combined efforts of the Oakland DPW, Police Department, ambulance, and fire services. Also, yoga continues in November for adults. Check the online calendar for sessions. They will also have a new art exhibit on the library stage for artist Nancy Mato, who will hold a reception on Saturday, November 15th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m., and whose artwork will be on display all of November. Children's programs continue on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and next Friday. November 7th, they will have the toddler dance party, for which registration is required. They also have an excellent children's yoga program on Saturday, 1st, 8th, and 15th at 10:00 a.m. Children just need to bring a mat and some water. Just a reminder, the OPL offers eBooks, audiobooks, and e-magazines. Libby by Overdrive is the free app available to all Oakland residents who can then borrow digital materials for free. They are part of the Advantage Program, which means they purchase additional copies of in-demand materials to meet local needs. If there's a digital resource you want, feel free to ask, and they will see if they can add it. Lastly, the OPL loves to hear from residents and what they want at the library, and they encourage suggestions. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Rose?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this week.
Okay, we're up to bills to be paid.
Bills to be paid, $353,756.37. So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council President Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman McCann?
Yes.
Councilman Pignatelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Saliani?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next Borough Council meeting will be held on Monday, not Tuesday, Monday, November 10th at 7:00 p.m. here at the Borough, at the council chambers. At this time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.